You guys would use that screen more during the board meetings.
You're good to go?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I want to call the Bath Planning Commission to order. It's December the 12th, and it's a couple of minutes to six. Everybody read the agenda?
Yes.
Can I get a consensus vote for approval to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda written.
And second?
Yep.
Support.
I'll second it.
Oh, second. Thank you, Reid. Those in favor say yes.
I'm wondering, um, tomorrow's the Clinton County Planning Commission is having a meeting on ordinances allowing and restricting renewable energy.
Yep.
I'm just curious if it might be worthwhile to have a conversation about where Bath stands on that, or might that fall outside the scope of?
We are going to have a discussion about that.
Today?
Yes.
Is that on the agenda?
Very briefly.
Oh.
It's, uh, it's part of the work plan for 2024.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody opposed to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Disclosure of conflict of interest? Anyone have a conflict? I don't think there's anything on. Thank you. General public comment. Do I see a couple of people from the public here? Would you like to make any comments about any item on the agenda or just a general comment about the planning commission? No? Okay, thank you. Minutes from the November 28th meeting. Has everybody read them? Is there any corrections, additions, changes?
I move their approval as written.
Support.
There's approval and the support for the agenda. I'm sorry, the minutes. Thank you. Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right. Let's move on. Communications, Miles.
All right, not at this time.
No communication. Old business. The community engagement report, and I see we have a representative from Williams and Works here. Would you like to address the podium, please?
You're going solo tonight.
Yeah, yes. Good afternoon, or good evening, rather. My name is Tanya De Olivera. I am the community planner, project manager, that's working on the non-motorized plan. And I'm here today to give you an overview of the community engagement activities that have been occurring related to the non-motorized plan. The report, which you would have received a copy of, is that correct, Miles? But they've had a chance to review it.
Yeah, it was underpacked.
Okay, yeah. So, um, the, just kind of as an overview, so we had one specific event held for the non-motorized plan, and that was a workshop held earlier this fall. I'll go over it a little bit. And then I also included, well, and then the survey that was put out, I'm also working on the Township's Parks and Recreation Plan. That survey that was put out also had some questions that were specifically developed based on the request of the township that also incorporates questions from the community related to non-motorized kinds of things. So, the entire survey is put in there, just that way you have a greater context of all the questions. And then also, we went to two different festivals this summer to get, well, one was the festival, one was the farmer's market, to get community feedback as well. And some of the activities that we had were related to feedback that were non-motorized related. So I also included that in there because I felt like some of you maybe have been following the Parks and Recreation Plan project, some of you may not have been. And so I just felt like because of the results that we have been collecting really also are important to the non-motorized plan effort, this particular effort, I thought we'd get to add. I will also say, the particular reason why we suggested having a specific engagement event, a photo of which is shown on the cover here, for the non-motorized plan specifically is that if the township were to go after DNR trust fund grant or something like that specifically for like a trail development or a non-motorized development, they want to have a activity, a public engagement event, that was specifically dedicated to the non-motorized plan. And so if we combined, like if we would have said, oh, well, let's do, you know, these engagement events for the Parks and Recreation Plan and for the non-motorized plan, the DNR would have said, well, we need you to do an actual event specifically for the public for the individual planning effort. So, that's why you might be like, oh, that seems like an awful lot, but that was done with intention. So, furthermore, the reason why we did a couple in person and a couple online is because post-pandemic, we have actually found the benefit. Some people like still, well, not still, some people like talking face-to-face. You get a lot of richer engagement, right, with somebody? You can talk with them, have conversations, feel out their body language. Other people, because of convenience or preference, they, it still allows like a lot of people to participate. We also did an online survey. So again, that way more people in the public could at least participate if they weren't able to come out to a workshop event because of, you know, life or childcare things. So, I just wanted to kind of give you guys that background. So, I'm going to go over at a very high level what the results say. At any time, it is okay with me if there's questions asked, however, I'll just kind of keep sharing. And then at the end, if there are any comments and questions, I'm happy to take those as well. Then I'll also just kind of share next steps, too. So, with that, unless there are any questions, I'm going to kind of go ahead and start. So, the first page, if you can go back, Miles. Thank you. So, the two maps, if you don't mind.
The maps? Yeah.
There you go. So, the first activity here that we did was, we had participants at the workshop give us their preferences. So, the map with the green dots, we asked people to highlight using a green dot, a sticker, right, in real time. I like biking, walking, and rolling here. And rolling means, so biking, you know, people are using a bike, right? Walking, rolling is sometimes a shorthand for people who need mobility assistance, maybe they're in wheelchairs, maybe they're in rockers, or are using a walker, rather, maybe people with strollers. It's just a more inclusive way to acknowledge, you know, non-motorized kinds of activity. Anyhow, so the green dots are showing where people like biking and walking. The map, the blue dots show that we asked people in a separate map, asking them, where is a destination in that, in Bath Charter Township? If you go to the next page, those two, yep, those two maps. So, the orange-stickered map, we asked people where they, where there are places for improvements. Maybe some of you are not surprised where some of those stickers are. And then the black dots, we asked people where they avoid biking, walking, or rolling. And then the fifth map is actually what we did, is we took a composite. We put all this information into GIS, and we had a composite of the three maps. So, maybe again, there's not some surprise in terms of overlap, where people like to bike and walk and roll, but where there's maybe some room for improvements, where there are some destinations, where there, you know. So, just kind of a piece of information that would be useful, just to help us get a sense of where activity areas are. Yeah.
So, all those dots were provided by 12 people who were in attendance at the meeting?
That's correct. Yep.
And then for those who are in attendance, I'm looking at the picture, and I recognize many of them. It looks like there's very good representation by us as the planning commission, as well as staff. I'm seeing a couple of community members that are familiar faces as well. I, can you talk a little bit about?
How we let people know that was happening?
Yeah. No, the, you know, how you might interpret the results in light of who's represented versus who might not be represented in the community.
Sure. So, we did provide, I think, a flyer, right, Miles? We developed a flyer.
Yeah, we actually went like really hard on trying to pass out the flyer, so.
So, yeah, so I will say, like, there was an effort made to invite the public, so anybody would be welcome to attend. It wasn't like it was an event that was targeted invitations or exclusivity, so anybody could participate. With this results, yes, there's 12 people. That's why it's also great that we had the community survey, that where more people took, more people took that, as well as when we went out to the farmer's market and the festival this summer. That provided more opportunities, right? So, people are out enjoying these activities, doing their thing, and Williams and Works happened to be there. So, that way, there is more of an opportunity to engage members of the public that maybe wouldn't traditionally participate in a workshop, you know, in this setting. So, yes, these results should be tempered with those other engagement activities that we, we held, or in the information that we gathered at them, as well as, I mean, working with Miles to help brainstorm, you know, just how we could get the word out. That's the best we could do in terms of engagement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, that's the result of Activity 1. The Activity 2, so the next page just kind of explains it. What we did is, as you can kind of see in the pictures, what we did is, we had a number of large sheets where people could use three stickers to, well, a couple sets of stickers, a yellow, red, and green sticker to indicate what they liked, what they kind of liked and what they didn't like in terms of having a goal and objective ideas for the plan itself. And then on the next two pages, Pages 6 and 7, again, these are the raw results of what the workshop participants indicated. And the reason why this was of value is that with a non-motorized plan, it can be used not only for, you know, sometimes if the DNR these days is asking for a plan, and then they're sometimes asking for, you know, goals and objectives that like align with your proposed project. So, that's good, as well as over the course of, you know, five, 10, even sometimes 20 years with planning projects, sometimes that's how long the plan lifespan is, is 20 years. This can help you use, make, help guide decisions that are made over the course of the planned project. So, over time, as the township considers, you know, what kind of non-motorized infrastructure it wants to build, do you guys want to do more off-road trails? Do you want to do, you know, things that are closer to the road or widen shoulders? When we're considering things like safety or infrastructure, deciding what goals make sense is meaningful and impactful. And this was an opportunity to provide members of the public to participate in selecting what the township should focus on for the plan's development. Yeah.
So, for the six dots, were participants urged to utilize all the dots in the voting process?
Yeah, I mean, yes, we said you can use as many or as few as you'd like.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, theoretically, somebody could have used all their green dots on, you know, on one line. You know, that was just the way the activity was explained.
I'm just trying to interpret where we might have all red dots or all yellow dots if there was a process that, you know, is a positive forward voting versus a sense that you have to actually vote negative and choose and?
Again, we didn't say you must. We say that you could. Up to you. So, as you can see, on the next page, I say this specifically, but goal, under Goal 1, like Objective 4, improve non-motorized crossings at significant intersections, that will seem to be important to participants. Under Goal 2, Objective 3, develop connections to community destinations like schools, healthcare services, grocery stores, and parks. Another one that was, received a lot of votes, was 3, under Goal 3, Objective 2, develop a wayfinding system and signage that will provide clear, simple information to promote navigating through the community with ease. Under Goal 4, Objective 1, collaborate with the Bath Safe Routes to School program to develop programs for school-age children. There were two representatives from Safe Routes to School, a couple of their leaders, so maybe that's, you know, not surprising that there were lots of green dots there. As well as Goal 5, Objective 5, develop infrastructure that is designed for utility, comfort, recreation, and beauty to encourage people to bike, walk, and roll. So.
I laugh because Jason is the lead on the Safe Routes to School committee?
No, I'm not the lead.
Oh, you're not?
No, Chris Hagerman is.
Oh, I thought you were.
No.
No. Yeah, I thought you and Chris were.
I helped start it, but Chris has been the champion ever since.
Huh.
So, that's, so then the last one activity we did, we did do a similar activity, which in the summer at the, call them the pop-up planning events, the festival and the farmer's market, we asked participants to make, kind of leave their mark, indicate where there may be non-motorized facilities in the community or think places that they'd like to see. And under a bullet, or number 3, the bullets just summarize where those places were that people wrote, you know, used their pen or marker on the map around, so places they'd like to see in the future is around Park Lake, in the Village/Four Corners area, Webster Road to Lake Road, the southern part of Chandler Road, State Road east of Park Lake, north of Saginaw Highway on Chadwell and other streets, and then along the county drain areas. So, just as a high-level summary. Before I move on to the community survey, any questions?
Does, is this planning on being filed with the DNR?
That's up to the township.
Okay.
Yeah. That's not a part of like what we're doing, and they don't necessarily ask for individual surveys, it's just something that you, you know, submit along with?
I meant the, I meant the, excuse me, I need to interrupt, the, the plan itself, the five-year plan.
The Parks and Recreation Plan?
Yeah.
I believe so, but that's a question for Taylor. She's handling the submitting it to the DNR. Williams and Works is not, and that's the Parks and Recreation Plan, so.
Okay.
Yeah. That also has not yet been approved by the board. I know that. It's on their docket, so. The commu-
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what kind of guidance can you provide us in terms of how we interpret these results so far, in terms of prioritizing our efforts?
So, I think the first thing is, is we want to continue to go through this engagement result, and I'd be interested actually to hear, so part of what I'm here for today is to get, because the planning commission is the steering committee, your feedback on what the community has said related to non-motorized infrastructure. And if that's also something you guys need to chew on, and then like send over to Miles and Miles, send back to me, that's totally fine as well. But, you know, this is, the report is meant to share with you what the public has said about what they think is important, what the issues are, where they'd like to see potential routes in the future. And then, like I said, I'm interested to hear what your reflections are, like, oh, you know, this, this seems to make sense, or, you know, we've been working on this project for, you know, 20 years, or, you know, you're right, this is an unsafe area, maybe we do need to think about improving safety here and those kinds of things. Part of your role as planning commission members is that you're also local officials, and so, you know, with your institutional knowledge, your vested input, it's also important along with the public to give, to guide the project. So, I'm looking actually like a little bit of feedback, you know, from you, because it's like the public, you guys, and then like myself is like the professional, so. I'm not trying to dodge, that's just the honest answer. Okay.
Yeah.
So, moving on to the community survey, so it's been a little while, but the survey was put out in June 12th through July 17th, so for about a month this summer. There were 23 questions and an 86% completion rate, which meant that people, sorry, there were 236 responses, so most people completed like all of the survey. They went and took all the questions. If you're interested, I can go over some of the demographics, but I want to kind of also focus on the questions that are more non-motorized related. A lot of the people live in the township who took the survey, not a lot of people from outside the township took the survey. Also, on Page 12, there is a breakdown of the age, and what we found, especially kind of post-COVID-19 pandemic, is online surveys typically do a better job of reaching a wider demographic, age range of people in the community, typically male surveys, our US male surveys are only, are mostly answered by older folks for whatever reason. So, the representation here you have of primarily people age 35 to 74 taking it is pretty good. We also like to see that there are actually some younger people as well as older people that took the survey. So, that's good. That is just what I wanted to highlight on the demographics. And so then the non-motorized questions really start at Question 16, which is on Page 36. So, just to kind of go over those briefly. So, unsurprisingly, the most frequent way people get around the township is by car. As you see, there's other responses. Those are the raw responses, so people, we gave people an opportunity to write in comments. Those are just as they were, we didn't edit them at all. Next question is, the way I travel around the township is based primarily on convenience and travel time, with some of it based on option availability, so maybe that's not surprising as well, but that's also good to know. Convenience right now is a driving factor of how people move around the township. Question 18, the most frequent way I'd like to get around the township, this is where the dynamics change a little bit. Most people still want to drive, however, there are a interesting number of people who would like to bike, walk, or roll, so that's just kind of interesting to note. There's a level of what's called latent demand or kind of built-up interest there that the infrastructure or other reasons don't support people going around the township by mode of choice. Question 19, if you walk, bike, or roll regularly, why? Of the people that answered this, which if you also notice, if you scroll down just a hair, Miles, so most, 163 people answered this question, however, 73 skipped it. Anyways, so that's just to show like maybe not everybody answered this question in particular. But if you bike, walk, or roll regularly, a lot of people are doing it for the health benefits as well as for fun. Also important to note, the mental health benefits these days, people are realizing that more and more, there's a, it's important.
So, for that question?
Yeah.
Would it be safe to assume that the people who didn't answer those questions are those people who don't bike, roll, or walk regularly?
It's, that would mean, who knows, right? Assumptions, that's hard to know, but yes, that's kind of sometimes with a question like this, they skipped it because they don't bike, walk, or roll regularly, so this question doesn't apply to me. Question 20, which methods of non-motorized or active transportation do you participate in? And please select all that applies. So, we asked people, you know, how do they get to school? They don't walk, bike, or roll, and then they bike or they walk. So, most people don't bike or walk to school. Most people don't bike, walk, or roll for event, to events or running errands, medical appointments, like for commuting purposes, although a few do. Interestingly, a number of these people do bike, sorry, walk, and then also bike for health, recreation, or enjoyment. Every community, there's going to be a little bit different mix. Some people might be using that stuff more for commuting purposes as well as recreation, but that also, you asked me about priorities, knowing that a lot of people are doing it for recreation might help drive the decision-making in terms of where to make investments and in what type, so. Question 21, I'd like to see more opportunities for kids to be able to bike, walk, and roll. Almost 75%. Question 21, this is also helpful because this, again, kind of gets at maybe helping understand what are the factors that are getting, getting in the way of people using trails, sidewalks, on shoulders, you know, to do the kind of traveling they want to do. So, 56%, there's a lack of safe, suitable infrastructure, like crosswalks or trails or sidewalks. And then almost 40% say a lack of direct connection to destinations. Other responses are also interesting because there's almost 25, there's 23 responses on this, so. People obviously felt like they needed to share their particular thought. Just see. And then Question 23, again, this was for parks, recreation, and non-motorized, so if you see the answers to Question 23, there'll be a lot of mix in terms of recreation-related comments and trails. Those are the, sort of the highlights of the survey. Anybody have any questions or comments before we move on? There's like almost 100, yeah, there's 100 comments. So, sometimes those are worth reading. So, the pop-up planning event, some, there's, one of the activities, so what I did is I included the whole report because I felt like, just didn't feel right to include everything. Didn't want to raise any questions about why did you exclude something and not others. So, the first activity, the penny jar voting for Upton Road property, that doesn't really relate to the non-motorized plan, but again, I just thought, since we had included so everything else, it felt weird to exclude it. But the, we had an activity, I'm starting on Page 55, Park Lake Road Corridor map results. So, at the Summer Solstice Festival in June, and then the farmer's market that we attended in July, we asked participants, we gave them an opportunity, we gave them a nice picture, as you can see here, of Park Lake, the Park Lake area, and then we gave them stickers, which if you can kind of zoom in or look at, you can see like maroonish stickers. We asked people to, you know, what kinds of things they'd like to see along the corridor, and then the yellow box itself actually asks people, what is their preference for improvements along the roadway? So, we gave people an opportunity to use some fun stickers like they did in school, as well as, you know, let us know what kind of infrastructure or street scape they like along the Park Lake Road corridor. And on the next page, it shows you the, the results using the stickers. So, maybe, I don't know, I thought, I thought this was interesting. At both, at both events, those that participated, people wanted crosswalks across Park Lake Road, sort of like, that was the most, that was the highest number of stickers that we got. And then there was a little bit difference sort of from down there, but that's why when it comes to non-motorized, I thought it was important to include this, is because the number one issue along the, along the Park Lake area with the parks and everything was crosswalks, so. Let's see, and then, and then on the check your preference activity, which is on the next page, Miles. On the little table, it has Option 1, so the options were, keep it the same, so maintain the existing roadway as it is along, right along like the Park Lake area. Option 2, add on-road facilities, like bike lanes as wide shoulders, wayfinding signage and street trees, you know, both, there was some interest in that. Option 3, to change the Park Lake Road corridor, add off-road facilities, like a trail for bikes and walks, biking and walking, crosswalks, lights, banners, street trees. People really were interested in that. Then a few people, some of them weren't checked as well, that's also important to note. And this was, of course, asking people, you know, without considering cost, or if there's actually right-of-way, or the political will, right? We just sort of said, you know, what's your vision? What would, what would you love? And this is what the public chose, which I thought, again, non-motorized, it's important for, for you all to know that.
Among the three options, I'm just-
Yeah.
Where would sidewalks fall?
Well, then, that's, that's a different, that's like a different, oh, wait, where would sidewalks fall if we asked people?
Well, I'm just looking at the three options, and it's not clear which one of those would encompass sidewalks.
Option 3 does.
So, um, when it comes to townships, a lot, we made an assumption, a lot of times people in communities, there's, in some ways, there's not that much of a difference when it comes to safety in terms of sidewalk versus a trail when it's close to the road. It's about that paved facility width, an amount of right-of-way, and so we use the word trail as kind of a all-encompassing term, and then the township could decide later if it would be like a sidewalk or a trail. When we're talking about a trail, if you're familiar with the corridor, there's not that much right-of-way, right? Like between the road and, and the buildings, or even just the road in general, like, you know, there's, so, we didn't, we didn't think it would, we thought it would be distracting to ask the public if they'd like a sidewalk or a trail, so we just chose the word trail.
I guess, I mean, among professionals, I can see why you would have a singular term, but I'm wondering, from the perspective of people who may not have that kind of training or understanding-
Yep.
Which option they would choose if, in fact, they were thinking of, quote, sidewalk-
Right.
-in their head. Could that muddle Option 2 choices versus Option 3 choices?
So, a sidewalk, so Option 2, on-road is like, people would be biking and walking, so if you have like a road, this is going to be a little technical, but if you, if you have, a sidewalk is not on the road.
So, I mean, I'm, I think we're all familiar with what is meant by that. I guess it's, for me, I'm trying to keep in mind, what is the participant thinking when they make their choice, which then helps me interpret the results for, then us-
Yeah.
-used for planning purposes.
So, I mean, like, you know, for this, you'd say a trail, like would translate to a trail, then you guys could have a discussion in the township if you feel like a sidewalk would be, if that, you know, how that would be perceived differently. You know, that, I mean, that's, that's a question, I'm again, trying to keep it simple so we wouldn't sit there and confuse the public. It was really about the idea of safety, right? If you have a non-motorized facility right next to cars and there's no separation, that feels less safe, especially to women and children. Whereas if you have an off-road facility, the separation between the road vehicles and people, that feels safer. Yeah, so. Good question, good point to raise.
So, could we assume, Tanya, that you could theoretically combine Option 2 and 3, that people are interested in some conveyance to get between the beach and?
So, yeah, so ultimately, what, you know, what myself and- So, yeah, so ultimately, what, you know, what myself and my colleagues, I had two different women, two, my two colleagues attend the events with me, yes. Was that really people are looking for some kind of level of improvement along the Park Lake Road corridor area, right? They're looking for something to kind of enhance the beauty, something probably also that would slow the traffic down. Some kind of safer connection for people who are, you know, biking, walking, rolling between the two. So, yeah, I mean, and I think then you're like, well, what facilities would we choose? That would be like a different, it's actually like a corridor study, that's like a different project you would have. That would be separate from the Parks and Recreation Plan and separate from the non-motorized plan. We just found that, in understanding what's happening with the township, this corridor was so important and special that it kind of deserved its own activity, just to kind of bring some information to light to township officials. And so that's why we chose this, and, and, I mean, like, I would say, yes, you'd, you'd think, yeah, we, this says, the public says we need to do something in the Park Lake Road area.
Go ahead, George.
Like, I think this stands on its own, one does say on and one does say off.
It does, yep.
And then as far as the sidewalk thing, we're not really talking about the actual substance of what we're working on. We're actually talking about getting off the road versus being on the road. And then we determine later what that substance might be.
And sometimes that determines on, you know, how much right-of-way you have, or what's the space between the, you know, the wetlands and the, you know, where that was, what they call them pinch points are, right? Like, so. So, and then on the kind of the beginning of, or the end of page fifty-seven, the back of page fifty-eight, this is where we, I had said that we also gave the public an opportunity to, you know, big map of the township and, and, you know, write and draw, make comments about non-motorized facilities where they'd like to see them. These comments on page fifty-eight, the last page, those are like the summary, the takeaway of those individual comments that were collected by the public for sort of a general, you know, where do you like to see non-motorized improvements at the township, or on the township in the future? So just summarizing them, there were fifteen comments in support of trails and related infrastructure. So people sometimes say sidewalks or trails or shoulders. Eleven comments were specifically in support of sidewalks. Interestingly, I think, I think those are kind of in the four corners area. Four comments related to road safety, two comments about Upton Road, two comments in support of a splash pad. You ask people, make your comments, they will make their comments, some tell. And then, then there's some other comments as well. So all this together combined is the, you know, what the public has said over the course of the summer and fall for non-motorized facilities for the township. And that's what I wanted to bring forward to you guys tonight to highlight and hear what your comments, your reflections, you know, good, bad, or otherwise might be, not only with myself, but just kind of with each other as well.
I have comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of this and the multiple strategies to engage the public. Engaging the public has, for a long time, been a challenge in our community, as well as every community. And there's certainly improvements that we can make in terms of engaging the public. One of the things I, outside of just this, I mean, because I, we've been a part of several different engagements that have had minimal high interactions. One of the things that I find absolutely fascinating about this is just how well it aligns with prior work. So a lot of this, a lot of the questions related to non-motorized trails were asked as part of the planning process for the Safe Routes to School I, I grant process. And there's almost perfect alignment. But what I would argue is even more interesting is, as you go back in time, back to comprehensive planning efforts and community surveys that go back into the early eighties, is that the results are consistent throughout time, in terms of what the community prioritizes, in terms of what they want, as well as their perceptions about how the township serves those interests and needs.
So the fact that it aligns with it, can you share with me, since I'm not privy to that institutional knowledge, like what, what you're seeing, are the reoccurring comments the public is making? Generally or specific?
Well, generally and also overlaid with my own biases. So what I see is, is that there's a strong interest in more recreational assets that target the needs of youth, as well as families and young adults. And the perception that those needs continue to not be met by the township. There has been a long interest in the ability to walk, roll, and bike. But fear based on safety, lack of high, high safe roadways, crosswalks, high sidewalks, other motorized or non-motorized plan, or high, high infrastructure. So, I mean, this is, a lot of this is, is, has been known to us. This report, from my perspective, adds a lot more detail and also reinforces this ongoing point. And so I, so those are my impressions.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
So, Tanya, would it be fair to say, you know, we're looking for feedback here? This is a lot of information. So I'd be more than willing, you know, if you guys take some time to think about this or want to come in and even pull out some of these maps and talk about it, I can take down notes and get everything kind of summarized up and sent back to Tanya, just so everyone's not on the spot tonight. But obviously, you don't want to stifle conversation as well, so.
One thing I wonder about is engaging with the Safe Routes to School. So the community survey had five respondents that were twenty-four years of age or younger. That gap might be able to be filled, at least partially, with the survey that was dated, I collected from students in our community, as well as their parents. And so at least to represent those interests, as opposed to the more elderly interests that have been represented in this, in this particular survey.
Are you saying there is a survey that was done by, that was completed by students?
I believe so.
When was that completed by?
Twenty, I, about two years ago?
Yeah, that'd be great to have. So if that, if you guys want to like pass it on to Miles and share with me, absolutely, that'd be wonderful.
I don't think it was as well.
It was twenty-twenty, wasn't it?
No one's left.
I don't.
It's not too long ago.
Three and one year ago.
Well, I think it was before COVID, is what, is.
No, I think it was in the, wasn't it? No, no, it was, it was in the after COVID, the summer.
Oh, it was, okay, then it would have been twenty-twenty-two.
The fall, it's the fall of twenty-twenty.
Either, either we'll hunt it down and get it to you.
Yeah, like, we like to kind of like, especially because of the pandemic, but like, last five years, you know, that stuff can be very helpful. Kind of further than that, it's not, and, yeah, it's within that timeframe, yeah, that would be helpful.
They were meetings held at the library with the people from.
Tanya, just so I know, so what, so you've now presented this to the planning commission. A little bit of feedback was provided, and then I'll hopefully be able to provide more as we talk and get things along. What's our next steps, just so I know?
Yeah, so, so we're going to be developing the goals and objectives. I will share that with you and pass it on to the planning commission. I got a, so there's going to be that. And then also, there'll be a draft network developed. And so what that means is that a proposed network of future facilities would be developed for a map for you guys essentially like, you know, follow and, and, you know, building, implementing. You know, sometimes, well, I'm not going to. So that's kind of, those are like the next, you know, big steps. And then packaging, so you guys have had a couple of previous chapters, draft chapters that were shared and then comments, I think, were shared back to me. And then like, once those goals and the draft network has been composed, the draft, entire draft plan would be like compiled. A draft of the, the whole draft plan would be then shared with the, the planning commission, the steering committee. And then comments, you know, would be also given to me. And then generally what we would recommend, but this is up to the township, is that the planning commission, you guys can either approve the plan or make a motion to approve the plan, recommending that the township board adopt the plan. And so that way, it becomes official township policy, you know, that just kind of strengthens the validity of the plan. And it also really helps with, you know, future grants and that kind of thing. So that's the, sort of the general outline of, of like next steps.
So our, our next biggest hurdle though is those goals and objectives. So you guys will draft up some ideas of what you're thinking.
Yep.
Give it to me, I can bring it as an agenda item for this body to mark up and provide feedback back to you.
Just to be clear, are we speaking of the non-motorized plan or the Parks and Rec?
Nope.
Non-motorized.
Yep, yeah, the Parks and Rec plan, that is essentially done, and it's just waiting for the board to look at it and review it and eventually adopt it. We are not that far with, with this plan, so.
And that was intentional, the timeline?
Yep, that's right, that's right.
Right.
Anyone have any further questions or comments from Tanya? She'd probably like to go back to Grand Rapids.
I have my kids and my family there, so, yeah.
Probably a good idea, then.
Eventually, yeah.
The pizza will be all gone. Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, thank you apparently. Miles, do you want to move into the sidewalk ordinance? Give us some history, because we have a couple of new people that really weren't part of the original.
Yeah, let me get to it. And I'll try to be as brief as possible because I do know we have an agenda item and some people waiting on it. I know we've talked about the sidewalks quite a bit, but just to go over, because we do have new people. So originally, the, just to give everyone the history on how, how we got here, I guess. Obviously, I think everyone in this room knows about the Safe Routes to School effort. And there have been other conversations at the board level of like, I'm just going to use the name of like a clean slate program where the board will allot a certain amount of money to come in and repair sections of sidewalk that are in quite a bad condition, in addition to what's already getting repaired through the Safe Routes to School efforts. That would then put basically, I, I think it really would be about like ninety-eight percent of the township sidewalks in what we consider great condition, quote unquote. Especially because most of the poor, quote unquote, conditioned sidewalks were in the area that's going to be covered by the Safe Routes to School efforts, so, which is downtown village area, whatever you want to call it. So anyways, that led the board to discuss, okay, well, we're getting all these sidewalks up to snuff here, but our ordinance hasn't been looked at in quite a long time. And we would like to start kind of rigorously enforcing this ordinance. So in order to do that, why don't we go ahead and have the planning commission take a look at the ordinance, update it? And I think after this updated the ordinance, there will be some kind of effort by staff directed by the board to kind of put it out there to the public, like, hey, guys, we know for the last twenty years, we weren't religiously getting after you when you were not clearing off snow or there was a crack in the sidewalk and, no, you never got a letter. And it got really bad over the twenty years and you still never got a letter. But now, if there's a sinkhole and that sidewalk sinks down in there, you will be getting a letter. We will be enforcing this ordinance to the T. So that's kind of what the impetus was to give this body a review of this ordinance. Now, like I said before, we kicked it around quite a bit. This has been through the township engineer to help us come up with much of the construction standards, because I don't install sidewalks for a living. We've tossed around the snow removal section quite a bit. There might even be a further policy discussion that's needed to be had about that. We've kind of decoupled that policy discussion from this snow removal conversation and just running with what was there now and doesn't cause any additional restructuring of township personnel or funds. And just a lot of edits to how enforcement works, how, what is considered needing repair, what are standards on differentiating the difference between sidewalks and trails slightly? We don't dive super deep into trails because we felt like if we did do a deep dive into trails, that could almost be its own chapter, own section in addition to sidewalks. I think that would probably be something to talk about in January, when we talk about the twenty-twenty-four workload. We, I think that trails ordinance might be something that this body might want to consider. So, yeah, that's kind of how we got here, that's kind of what we're looking at now, just scrolling through here. We, you know, the violations and penalties section was something that we discussed pretty thoroughly. We talked about maybe getting rid of that altogether because we felt like we had a different, we kind of instituted a different framework on how this would work and how the sidewalk would get fixed that would not really call for the need of going through that order process. But we thought, why not keep it in there because it's still a tool in a toolbox? And if we've learned anything about people that don't comply with the situation, it's that they really don't comply. The people that you can just go up and say, okay, man, it's clearly broke, could you just like do something here? Nine times out of ten, they're going to do it. It's that one time out of ten where it's really difficult to work with that individual. So we thought, why not just keep it in there? We also added the sidewalk standard into, because again, when you go to our code of ordinance, this is going to be a standalone regulatory section. Developer might not necessarily be looking for all this language in that random chapter throughout the ordinance. So we added a quick reference to it and just a quick dimensional standard that's required into the site plan approval section of the zoning code. So that was kind of different and unique as well. Basically saying like, hey, you have to have sidewalks on a commercial development very quickly. And then once they're like, okay, we need to have sidewalks by what standard, then it'll lead them to this whole chapter.
And so what actually are you looking for tonight, Miles?
Well, again, just like the private roads and drives, we've got some new members on the planning commission now and coming to the planning commission. We just put it in the packet, this is the latest iteration. We're not trying to rush anything along, we know this will have an effect on the community. But if this body felt like it was in a good state, I mean, obviously, we're ready to move this forward anytime.
That's the plan, right? So does anyone have any comments? Do you want more time to look at this?
I have some clarifying questions. And, and it's just, it's probably my not having taken a thorough, deep read of this. And so please correct me where I might be not thinking clearly about things. So section fifty-eight point three-five, I, this is on repair and maintenance of sidewalks. So section A talks about its responsibility to the owner. But then B reverts back to the township shall perform ordinary, ordinary maintenance of pathways, except when the maintenance of them is a result of negligence, blah, blah, blah. I'm curious about what that ordinary maintenance might be and why isn't that the responsibility of the property owner?
It's the difference between sidewalks and pathways.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of like really nuanced stuff in there like that.
Okay.
So pathway will be, and it might not even be something we have established right now. I mean, the only one I can think of off the top of my head is the one on Robson Road Park. There's a pathway, as we define pathway, in there that the township maintains. Where a sidewalk is, it's going to be in the road right-of-way, it's going to be out, out front in a house or a commercial building.
So thank you. I, I wonder if, might, might that, a header might be helpful here? Like maybe just a bold word, pathways or not?
Yeah, that's why, that's why we, yeah, we can do that for sure. And I don't think that's a bad suggestion, but that's why if we go back and do like a separate trails chapter, what would probably end up happening there is we would pull a lot of this out of the sidewalks and stick it into its own chapter. So we very, we very gently touch on, or this is almost like trail adjacent language, you know?
Another question I have is, I, in several places, I, I, there's a reference to like section fifty-eight point three-six, I order to construct a repair. And so there's like, if any owner shall fail, blah, blah, blah. Parcel land within which time, as required by the planning commission or Board of Trustees. I'm curious as to why there's a reference either or, and why not a reference to as mandated by the ordinance itself? Just.
I guess we saw, maybe it depends on how it comes to the planning commission. Like if they were reviewing some kind of site plan review and they notice that the sidewalks need repair, then it gives a tool in their toolbox. But like if it's a big issue and it's large enough to scale where it would need to be a decision made by a le, elective body, it could go up to the board, it just remained like all the tools in the toolbox were there.
So this will get, I, I think, more clear in terms of my third question. So this will get, I I think more clear in terms of my third question. But I, the the, my concern here is that um I placing the I I the authority on a body that's either elected or appointed as opposed to the ordinance itself gets a bit sticky and political.
Yeah, no, I I agree with that. I guess the intent was every situation is unique and, you know, I I agree.
So i- in the case of, you know, we're doing a site planner review and and one of us or we as a body say, oh, this seems to be an issue.
Yeah.
Wouldn't the mechanism, we just refer to the?
Yeah, you could.
Um, so that then brings me to the the next question. And I I think it's under the same section. It's, I think it's B procedure when construction deemed necessary.
B and C.
Is it B and C? Okay, so so is my interpretation correct that I, in order for I movement to be made on a repair, there would be the need for action by the board of trustees?
Yeah, it it is the case. Um, because there's gonna, we're, there's gonna be a financial burden on a resident. And again, this is structured from like, we didn't come up with this on our own. This is how other, I mean, this is how other places similarly operate.
So like with our junk ordinance, I mean, we don't ask the board to act upon I uh form a public forum uh and then to act upon this. I can see if, that that would be necessary if there were multiple homeowners that were affected, like a city block or something like that. But but for say you have a developer or a single property, it seems very limiting and then also um I, a lot of bureaucracy I added to the the board of trustees' agenda or or scope of work to have them act upon this, especially considering the board of trustees is a political body.
Yeah.
And so you'd find things where they would never enforce ordinances in six months prior to an election, right? So I think this is, I would be very cautious about I I um moving away from an established township position and set of structures to enforce our ordinances and moving this to a political body.
Yeah. So a couple of things. So one, I think everything you said about um the t- the board being a political body is true and I like to live in the real world where like real things happen and people actually have incentives to do stuff. I think that we could decouple these though, because it it there, you could be in the situation where it might be a city block and maybe it does require a a decision of like a larger group to make. It would feel weird for a staff member to be making a decision about whole city block. Um, so we could decouple it and say like if it's just, we do that already in planning when it comes to single-family homes versus commercials. Single-family homes, we do administratively where commercial is brought before by. Um, so that is an option and I think that would be good. I think that is fine, in my opinion. I don't see any issues with that. The the one difference though between the example of like this is a sidewalk they're repairing versus like a blighted property that they have to fix up is the sidewalk's a public good that the public is using, not just them. The sidewalk degrading also could be the result of a tree in the right of way that, you know, is a hundred percent their control on the roots through overtime and now they're left to fix it where like the blighted property is most likely a result of their own actions. So it's like a self-inflicted one. Where the sidewalk maybe wasn't.
I I mean, where we currently are, I would argue yes, right? Because we lacked enforcement. I think once we get up to speed, I, I mean, you said that ninety percent of our sidewalks are in great condition.
Then it would be almost a self self-inflicted one because they didn't maintain over time.
I mean, the other thing is the board can always choose to take on this, an initiative above and beyond the scope of this ordinance in terms of, we want to beautify a segment of our community, right? They don't have to do this relevant relative to what's written in the ordinance. I just think it's it's very limited. It it limits the tools of of enforcement to involve the.
No, and I'm always, I mean, I'm an advocate for giving all the power to bodies if they want it. I do see in the real world that uh administratively moving things along can move things much quicker. Because then we don't have like this whole process we have to go through. So I'm fine if this body's fine with directing us to decouple that a little bit. So right now we have two paragraphs here. One paragraph's for maintenance, one's for repair. So we'll just set four paragraphs. One for administrative maintenance, one for administrative repair, one for, and then these two that we already have. But we'll structure them so they only apply to large areas. So three parcels or more, let's say.
I think that's why the ordinance is written where it is. And I've had problems with this since it started is that the ordinance, the way it's written, except for the first sentence here that Jason brought up, which I don't like either. It shouldn't go to the board or it should be. Now, the reason it's overarching thing like this is because most communities have got a lot of sidewalks. We don't have a lot of sidewalks.
You don't have a ton. We have some.
But when we get done with our repair, they're all gonna be basically the same condition.
Yeah, hopefully that's the goal.
So you're either gonna have one piece of sidewalk needs to be repaired or the entire neighborhood is going to be repaired. Now, if it's entire neighborhood, then this fits.
Yeah.
Where the board gets involved, we have to have a public hearing. Because basically the contract, the township will award the contract to get the work done.
Yeah.
The individual property owners won't.
Yeah.
And so that's why I think we got some of this stuff in here because it fits kind of that situation. But the individual, like if one square sidewalk in front of somebody's house gets broken.
Yeah.
That that should be an administrative, get it done.
Yeah. No, we can do, so you're in the camp of decoupling those as well. So we'll we'll do that. And that, I will say, that's a big enough edit where I recommend let us decouple this and bring this back to you guys and see what you think.
Now, while we're talking about B and C, since we're into this section already, which is on page twelve, I think.
Yep, or six of twelve, yeah.
Yeah, on page, on page six.
Okay.
In both B and C, you've got the same thing in here twice.
Yeah, but one's for, one's for maintenance and one is for repair.
No. You've got the same thing in both A and B and both B and C. You start down here by saying that all property owners will be allowed sixty days. Then then it down, it starts.
Yeah, one's for, one's for construction, one's for maintenance.
Right at the beginning of the section.
If the adjacent property owner is only benefited property owner, the owner will be allowed sixty days to perform. Then everything's the same.
Yep.
It shouldn't make it, it shouldn't make any difference whether one property owner or twenty property owners. It's still the same thing.
I guess we had to specify.
The one would be where you're gonna break it out and say, that's administrative. Okay?
Yeah, we could do that now, but that's what I'm saying. Now we get to restructure all of this.
But but then also you've got the same thing in in uh in C, under the maintenance part.
Yep.
So that that duplication's in both B and C.
Yep, that was intentional.
Yeah, I.
So, I mean.
Makes sense.
In section C for maintenance, is it realistic to expect a property owner to have a sidewalk company come and replace something in a twenty-day period?
No, no.
No. Yeah, I don't uh, I don't build sidewalks for a living, so I don't know.
The biggest problem is is how soon you get some contract that hasn't got any work to do to get it done in twenty days.
Well.
It's just a matter of timing.
Can we frame it up that a contract is in place within twenty days?
Well, the other thing is allowing the property owner to do it himself if he wants to. If he's got the ability to do it, didn't one square sidewalk.
Again, maintenance is twenty days, construction is sixty days. So maintenance would just be like you have a pretty large crack. So it's, it's not the same. Construction, their, construction, they have to bring in a jackhammer, remove all sidewalk and construct new sidewalk. That's why there's two different sections.
Hmm, okay.
I don't know, I'm not trying to differentiate between the two.
Construction is establishing, oh, new. Where maintenance is like you have a crack, a large crack.
Well, so I think about I, um, we're over here on Webster and Clark. I, between Clark and I, the elementary school, there's probably, I don't know, sixty feet of sidewalk that is leaning to one direction.
Yeah, we've gotten some calls about that section of sidewalk, I know of it.
And so, so the question is, is that construction or is that maintenance? I mean, on the assumption that that would be.
I would say it's maintenance because they can they can inject concrete under and level it out.
So in that that case, there's about a zero percent chance that if they were to be approached by the township and say, hey, you're out of compliance, fix this, that they can complete that in twenty days.
I don't know. I don't know what the timeline is.
Can't they come to the body anyways and across extra time?
They could, but either way, it sounds like you want more time to be built in, which I'm fine with. We're gonna rewrite this anyways. What do you think, uh, reasonable time?
I would talk to Hosford.
Okay. And no, that's, that's not a bad recommendation. Maybe we should call Daryl Hosford.
To do the work for a contractor, to do the work, it would take him two days.
Yeah, but the scheduling.
The minute I call you and say, can you do the work? Well, yeah, I can schedule it for August. I'm too busy to do it before that.
Yeah, August of the next year possibly.
The other thing we gotta do is, first we gotta define what's construction and what's maintenance. But I've, I've been looking at construction as being new sidewalk.
Yep.
Maintenance is replacement of an existing sidewalk. I don't care if it's torn out and replaced or whatever. Maintenance is something you do to an existing sidewalk.
Okay.
Construction is a brand-new facility where nothing's existed before.
So is that outlined in definitions?
No, but it can't be.
No, it's not.
But that's, uh, this is all the feedback we're looking for. Because the, wherever you guys are getting confused, I mean, that's where the general politics are on it.
That's where I was confused with this stuff, I guess. Because I, I look, it made this to be different than what this was.
An example that I used, I have a house in Luddington. The city of Luddington has contracted with a contractor for sidewalks. They go through sections every summer. Ident- or in the spring, identify, so you're the landowner. We tell you that that needs to be replaced. You have a choice. You can do it yourself, hire somebody for, use the contract in place. And get the price, which is, I can tell you, I've got to replace about sixty feet. Um, and I'll be taking that price. And let them schedule it, but I've done, I'm in compliance because it's now when they.
You've scheduled it.
If I contracted, said I want it done, the city will then schedule it and get it done through the contract.
When do you pay?
I, they actually have it so I can pay it over five years.
Okay, and that's, we're looking for a similar.
That's exactly what we talked about.
So Luddington has it and they, they, they're doing the curb cuts, they're doing everything as they go.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Meridian Township has exactly the same thing.
Great. And uh, what's this, can, did we write down the name of that community? We'll look at their ordinance.
Luddington, yeah.
Did you look, did you look at Meridians?
We did look at Meridians.
That sounds like the same thing.
Yeah. All right, well, great. That's a lot of feedback. Let us get some stuff back to you. I think that was great, guys. Thank you.
I'll give you, I'll get a couple of, well, I got, I got a question here.
Okay.
That was my biggest question, I think, but those are just typos. Section fifty-eight thirty-three.
What page are you on, Ray?
Two.
Okay.
The sentence here says that the board trustees can order the construction of whatever of sidewalks in a, in a designated area. Now, that can be interpreted in, it's like, what's the designated area then?
Yeah.
You say any designated area?
A designated area. They get the.
Any designated area or something, you know?
Sometimes playing language is broad on purpose, you know? That way it doesn't restrict the board from where they get to develop. I mean, I don't even know if you need it all. You could just say the board or trustees uh gets to determine if they want to develop a sidewalk. You don't even have to say an area.
The only other word I think we need to change is, is the last sentence in B.
Okay.
Where the, so super, and the construction, and C, they ever constructed, C is not, I saw it, it's constructed. We should say they gotta confirm it or something.
Okay.
I'll give you the scene. I just got typos in here too.
Well, yeah, make sure you give us that.
Hello. That's why I printed it off today, Seth. I've asked this question before too. Have you talked to an engineer or somebody? I'm an engineer, but that doesn't make sense to me, I guess. On page eight, V, six V, joints. We still have this thing here that says divider strips, three and a half, I don't, what the heck that means?
You talked about this before.
Yeah, I don't know what it means.
I think we, I ran it by our engineer and he gave me a good answer and I didn't write down those answers. So.
Ask him again.
I'm gonna ask him.
We'll get, we'll get no idea what that means.
We'll get an answer in writing for you, so let's mark that.
One question I have is on non-motorized, non-motorized trail construction standards. Um, and these look like, these are rigorous standards, uh, probably for ADA compliance purposes.
Yeah, I, and again, all the construction standards are developed by the township engineer because I don't know what the common construction standards are.
So the the question I have is, um, I in what, in what cases would these apply versus not apply? So I'm thinking like roads and trail, of course, uh, or the trails behind between the uh middle and middle school and high school.
Yeah.
I versus, you know, off uh road, but in the public right of way.
Yeah. The smallest section of trail that the township maintains in the East Lansing Trail Network, super is fine, it's like twenty feet, but it's ours.
And I'm, I'm just, my concern is that, you know, when we have conversations about the Park Lake Trail, can this be weaponized against that? Because the cost of developing a non-motorized trails, I would um be so obscenely high to make it infeasible, whereas a a set of standards that were more relaxed um might allow for I, I.
Yeah, the only, I guess, but the only problem in this is I really don't want to drive down this rabbit hole because we do have people here tonight. Um, the only thing though that staff has ever seen as a problem with the Park Lake Trail, I mean, there's a couple of things that obviously staff has been concerned about, but is if that trail was to be funded by some kind of DNR grant, it would be required to be ADA compliant in the first place. So it's gonna be absorbently expensive. That's always a problem with taking state inferral money. Because it's great because you get state inferral money, but then you have to go through the state inferral process, which costs even more money to go through.
Yeah, no, no, I I I get that. And and I'm just wondering if there might be other, like if if we don't get DNR funds for, say, the Upton Roads, I, you know, development.
Yeah, it would ra- it would raise costs to keep it ADA compliant for sure. I mean, I think the answer is yes.
So I I guess for, you know, I, consideration, could there be flexibility that is built in under certain articulated circumstances?
Yeah, we could build in like a catch-all flexibility. The planning commission can deviate from these standards or.
Based on the township board after, within, it could be used provided.
If it was in a non-motor, because we've got sidewalks, non-motorized
Again.
Pathways, and now we got trail, so.
Yeah, again, though, hopefully the non-motorized trails, and maybe we can just change this header to, because to your point, it's confusing. Maybe we can call it just like pathway construction standards. Um, with, this is obviously the header that was in the ordinance prior to us getting into it because it's in black. Um, but again, hopefully the goal would be is in, if we do some kind of trail ordinance in twenty twenty-four, this section is gonna get pulled out of this chapter and into that other chapter.
If you just change the title of this in here, then this conflicts with what we've got back here where it says the pathways have to be ten feet wide.
Does it say in here that they can be under twelve?
Yeah, this is eight feet wide. And 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 I think the other thing is non-motorized trails should be able to be, they don't have to be paved.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking of the trail that goes between.
Yeah, that's true. And we, and we said pathways do.
Yeah.
So maybe trails are something we need to define as a third thing in addition to pathways.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, but I think all these issues are separate from the sidewalk issue.
They are, but they're all language in the ordinance, so I see you guys' point, so.
Right, correct.
We'll take it back. I mean, this is all really good. This is stuff that wasn't covered before.
Give me something to do tomorrow.
Yeah.
You're afraid you have nothing to do tomorrow, ain't you?
All right, well, that's a lot for us, honestly, so.
Yep.
It's exciting to see this, though.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So let's discuss the meeting times. I know there's a couple of dates that are in conflict. One for the election, people, and the other one because of holiday.
What's the February twenty-seventh?
That is, there's gonna be an election in this room that day.
What is?
Yeah, at that time. So it might be election training or some, it's something to do with the elections that's happening in this room at this time.
Yeah.
So I got an email from Brenda about that and she was like, Miles, planning commission needs to do something.
Right, so do you want to schedule the meeting in a different time and place or, well, no, we can't do a different place. Do you want to just eliminate that meeting? Uh, do you want to potentially eliminate it? And maybe reschedule later depending on our workload? What's the feeling of the people?
Do it a day before.
Well, I think it depends on how busy, you know, what's going on. I think we should just say that's gonna be rescheduled at a later date.
That's fine, but we need to let them know that we, we're not gonna meet on the twenty-seventh. I, that's the point I want to make.
You need a motion or anything?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, we do.
I make a motion that on both. I make a motion that, on both these dates, uh, February twenty-seventh and September twenty-fourth. We, uh, postpone or, uh, do not have a meeting, and cancel the meeting, and, uh, reschedule if needed at a later date. Is that okay?
That works for us.
Yep.
Support.
Second, thank you. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolve that with Miles. Let's move on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. New business, the I Townhouse Development Luminary induction. Uh, you have a map in front of you, and Miles is gonna give us a quick rundown. I wanna try a little experiment that I'll tell you about after he gives us a quick rundown.
Okay, well, I'll just talk real quick about what we're looking at here. The developers are here tonight, I'm sure they wanna speak about this development as well. Um, basically, this is in de-development. If you're not familiar with the area of the township that we're talking about, it is kinda encompassed within Somerset, um, right off Somerset Lane off Webster Road. Um, it's seventy-something units of housing that we're talking about. And, uh, this plan has come before this body before in different iterations. This one's a little bit different from what we've seen. I think when I was here last, they had a number of drives coming, um, off of Somerset itself. And now they've built out more interior drives and moved the building orientation to be fed mostly off of those drives. I think there's only a couple of units that are still fed off of Abbey Lane. Uh, they broke up some of these, that, before we had longer sets of, uh, units all tied together. Some of our feedback was, you know, fire hose, potential to get around those could be problematic. Um, so we have, this has been updated over time with some of the advice they've taken. Um, I think it's also worth noting that we were working with Luide before. Um, unfortunately, Luide is no longer with us. Uh, Samide has taken this project over. Uh, he's obviously here tonight. And so I've heard the feedback that this body has had on this development before, but the gentleman in front of us tonight hasn't necessarily heard it. So this is, we're kinda saying the reset button on this one, and looking to give him all your feedback and what your thoughts on this are. And try to move forward with this under that understanding, that we're, we're kinda starting off fresh here, I guess.
So do you wanna address the, this is gonna be apartments, is that correct? It's not gonna be townhomes or condominiums or?
Um, the developer could probably speak to this a little bit, but they've used the term townhomes in the past. I mean, functionally, they, to me, they look almost like condominiums. But they will be, it's been expressed, they're gonna be for rental. So it'd be garage in the front, and then the living quarters behind the garage.
Okay, so this is gonna be one development owned by one owner, okay. I'd like to try a little experiment, gentlemen. Uh, we've sometimes had kind of a free-for-all as to the, the questions we were gonna have. Let's take three minutes, everybody write down the concerns they have about this, and then we'll go commissioner by commissioner. And address a concern, have a discussion, and move on to the next concern. Does anyone have a problem with that idea? We'll see how it works. Maybe it's not a good idea, maybe it is.
Fabulous idea.
Do you care if someone wants to use the restroom during that three minutes?
Absolutely, do whatever you want.
No.
Write down your concerns, use the restroom, go outside, have a smoke if that's what you need to do, and we're gonna have three minutes. Ray, let's take a pause here. Do we wanna open the meeting up so that the developer and those commissioners can have interaction? Is that the pleasure of the board?
Yes.
The gentlemen, okay with that?
Sure.
Would you step to the podium for the mic and?
Support.
Well, we'll just do it, okay? Thank you.
Aye.
Ray, you wanna reiterate your question?
Just a general question, what's the relationship gonna be with this development and Somerset?
There won't be any.
Okay, it'll be totally separate?
Totally, they completely suffer company that owns it, we sold those.
Yep, that's kinda what I thought.
Number of years ago.
That's what it was before, so. So as far as rental office, then you'll have your own separate rental office in this, in this development?
Yep.
Okay. And as far as recreational areas, then when you submit your detailed site plan.
We're, we're not anticipating, when you're saying recreation, when you say kids and families, it's not intended to be family-oriented. It's gonna be more of a elder, senior, it's not gonna be exclusive, but that is gonna be more of our market, which is gonna be totally separate from, I would say, separate, different from the existing Somerset.
Yep, okay, okay. So they're gonna, in another development, whether the dogs allowed, about a dog park, where it's gonna be, they'll allow.
There'll be, there'll be facilities like that, you know, obviously there'll be biking trails, walking trails, things that are in that area. We're working with the road commission, I think, for some easements for sidewalks and things like that now.
Okay.
So.
So there may be a dog park someplace here, if dogs are gonna be allowed.
There, there will be dogs allowed, and, yeah, how we decide to do the dog park, we'll have to incorporate that into some of the areas, yeah.
And the other thing, with our new architectural standards and stuff, um, you know, we're interested in the, the building design, what it's gonna look like, materials and colors and stuff like that, to make sure it all fits in the kinda how we tend.
Absolutely.
Look, and so, so the, kinda the broad thing, as far as, kind of, traffic's come up before, but I don't really see.
Renderings you'll have at a later date?
It's, wait a minute, gentlemen, let's.
I understand this is more preliminary and some of these.
Sure. Yeah. I'll stick with the topic at hand. Mr. Severi had a question.
Just, on, on traffic, I don't think, I don't really see a problem with traffic here. Except at the intersection here, there's gonna be a lot more traffic coming out, and with the development across the street, at some point in time, talk to the county road commission, see if we're gonna need a traffic light here or anything to handle, to handle all this.
Yeah.
So I don't know, there may, there may be a need for a traffic study for this area sometime soon.
We've already had some preliminary traffic studies done, and everything is, is, is available, there's no issues right now.
It may not be yoga, maybe across the street's gonna cause a problem, I don't know.
Yeah, we're hoping that we'll be able to stagger the shifts, you know?
Well, there's a lot more vacant land across the street, too.
That's true, yeah, I know.
It's gonna be something.
Yeah.
At some point in time. Okay, that, those are the basic things I had. Jason, you wanna go ahead?
So let me build off of Ray's comments. So previously, we had concerns about the fact that these are two differently-owned developments. The lack of amenities such as a clubhouse, pool, tennis courts, et cetera. I think the concern that was articulated by representatives from Somerset that we shared was how will residents in this development know what they can and cannot use? And so, um, and so I'm not sure how to best resolve that, whether that would be fencing and signage or an agreement articulation with Somerset. But it is a concern, um, that, that their amenities would be utilized by the residents in this development. So I'll just leave that as is. Um, I, but the question I have is, so this, this parcel butts Webster Road for its entire length, right?
Yeah.
So this parcel's also within the downtown development authority district, which has its own side, sidewalk, uh, requirements. And I'm not seeing sidewalks, uh, along Webster Road, uh, for this development.
Yep.
So that will be something that will have to be looked at, um, in terms of application to, for that, that requirement. Those are all, those are my concerns.
Mark? On-street parking, cause you're next to Somerset, and you've got parking in the driveway. But is there enough space for on-street, and is it going to be controlled?
Guess I don't understand, is there enough on the street, on the interior streets?
On the interior streets.
I guess if somebody's having a big party, it might be a little congested, but generally, you're not gonna see multiple cars at these units, one or two at the most. You'll have the garage and, and additional driveway area. There would not generally be on-street parking unless someone's maybe a guest, but not a, not overnight, not a long-term situation.
Can I ask? I lived in one of these in Virginia, and there's on-street parking.
I, I don't doubt that they, they couldn't, I just don't know that I see it as a, as a regular situation.
Do you have anything else, Mark?
No, that was, I had the dog park, too.
Okay. Going off of that comment, these interior streets are all gonna be part of the development, it's not gonna be public streets, I'm not gonna be, okay. You know how wide they're gonna be yet?
Sure we do.
That was my.
I'm sure he's doing.
He's just not in the.
Sure we do. They're labeled as thirty-four feet.
Thirty-four feet wide?
Thirty-four, so I think that's probably back a curb to back a curb. And then it, it was a sixty-six foot quote-unquote right-of-way that the streets were in, even though it's gonna be private.
Yeah. Say thank you. George, you had a question?
So is that, uh, could you scroll so I can see that parking lot to the bottom right of the image you have up there? Is that extra parking there?
That's Somerset.
No, that's part of Somerset.
That's another unit, there's a lot there.
Right here.
George?
Oh, I see.
There's another unit down there.
Yeah, over there.
Do you have anything else, or? Do you have anything else?
Yes, so, uh, there is no overflow parking. Is there, where's the green space? Like, do you have, like, even in the city of Lansing, even for old residents or young residents or families, they put in city parks and the like. Is there anything in there? I don't see anything like that in there.
There, there will be green space, walking trails, bike paths, sidewalks.
In, in your?
In within that area, I, I got twenty acres there.
So within your space, and there'll be a, and again, more and more people have the dog, the dog issue.
Yep.
So the dog parks definitely is one of my, and then, did you say you do have a rental office or do not have a rental office?
Rental office will be part of one of the units there.
Okay.
I'm, I've, I've got limited units here, this is not a big Somerset development, and we're not able to put in some of the amenities that we did when we did Somerset originally. But it's a different, it's a different development.
So if they're, so if these are like a townhouse or a condo, are, is there one dumpster area, or are they individual trash areas? Individual trash?
They'll probably, individual trash.
So you have a local.
They'll have, they'll have their own, uh, roll-out dumpsters. Each unit will have its own trash container.
Okay, and they just keep that in the garage or something?
Yep.
Okay, so, and then, um, yeah, that, that, that's, that's all I guess I had besides.
You give me two car garages?
I do.
I think they're about one, one and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
One and a half's okay.
I have one more.
Then you can go ahead, George.
So if these are rentals, will there be a maintenance garage or a maintenance facility?
We're gonna have to do something, yeah, but I don't know how that's gonna be settled yet. Might be the same unit that the, uh, that the rental office is out of.
So I, I know I'd's a pretty big company, probably got, guys.
We, we got, we got, we got options.
I just, just wondered how that was gonna work out, so that.
Sometimes we don't know until, until we know how we gotta do it and, and try and figure it out after the fact, but, but we'll try and, we'll take that into consideration along the way.
Cause we'll, we'll probably wanna have, know what's going on with the, all those, all these questions before.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Ryan, do you have something?
Uh, not much new. I think the questions asked were great, just, you know, the, the timeframe, and is this the last piece of the evolution, or will there be more changes coming to us? It's, it's sort of exciting that there's.
No, this is more online with where it should have been for you.
Yeah, and I don't.
We, we had discussions, trust me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to criticize the timeframe, but like, it is helpful to like wrap your head around what it's gonna look like.
This is more in line with, with our finished product.
Great, thanks.
That the only thing you had?
Yeah.
George, did you have something else?
I just wanted to ask one more thing. A lot of these things do not come from me, they come from conversations with others. But, um, you said the demographic that you're shooting for is?
Fifty-five and up?
Fifty, fifty, fifty-five, you know, you know, snowbirds, you know, younger couples. We're not thinking it's gonna be the Somerset model, which is younger professionals and driving to wherever they're driving to, these, the people that could be living here could be gone by now and headed south.
Okay.
Um, could be more of a summer residence, so it's, it's, it's a different product.
It's kinda the residential neighborhood-ish.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, residential. But it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an older clientele, for the most part is what we expect. Not to say that
Right.
the thirty-year-olds don't, don't show up and live there, too, but I think I see more of my demographic around here, so.
Okay, Ray?
I, um, are, are these gonna have, like, backyards fenced in or something of that nature?
They won't be, they won't be fenced in, it's gonna be open through the backyard.
It'll be all open space in the.
Exactly, yeah, there may not be, there may be some screening, but not, not a fence that's gonna enclose anybody off of any.
The reason I ask is that this, this square here is drastically different than all the rest, rest of them with this close space right here.
Right.
I guess I would have put six units here, six units here, and then put that one that you lost, you know, maybe here or over here.
We'd look at that, yeah. That's not a bad idea, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, and then we could really do a lot with that.
Right.
Out in front there, you know, it's walking or dog park or whatever.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I, uh,
The units.
Soon as I looked at it, wow, why is that, why are they so close to each other?
What was that?
You'll have back doors into those areas?
Yep, little patios in the back, yep.
Okay, and that's where the AC units will be?
Um, yeah, they'll be off si- on the sides, could, they could all be on one end, actually, maybe. Depends, yeah, depends on how we gotta run, maybe both ends, but there'll, there'll be, there'll be patios off the back.
Okay.
Came back to the parking issue, on-street parking, the reason I asked is the, where's the street, because if, if you get. Because if, if you get thirty-three feet face-to-face to curb about, that's plenty of room to have parking on one side and two-way traffic on the other side.
Right.
So I don't think parking should be really.
We don't anticipate parking being a problem, we really don't.
On-street parking, even if you had to put no parking on one side of the street.
Right, park on both sides, then you're gonna be a little congested that way.
Well, as long as they weave through. No worse than some of the streets in East Lansing, where the students are.
I just, I just noticed something here. I'm a, an antique telephone aficionado, and I see in your legend you have a, a drive-up telephone. Where is that gonna be?
Um, that might be someplace else. I think, I think it's driving in your telephone, driving up with your phone.
Drive-up telephone, it says.
Drive-up with your phone.
Yeah. We remember that, but a lot of people may not, you know?
Okay, I have several questions. I noticed that the, the drives all go out onto the roads and they're relatively close to each other. What's your plan for what to do with the snow that comes from the road? Cause if you push it in the drives, I think we've got a problem.
No, you wouldn't be able to push it in the drives. With all we got years like this, we got plenty of room going this way. Yeah, I guess I don't have that, I don't have an answer to that.
I mean, that, that's something that would get worked out in a full set of plans since we do require.
Well, I know, but I, I, I just think that it's something that he wants to be thinking about.
Sure, it might be places to put it, if it starts piling up, then it's, uh, then you're bringing in a loader and moving it someplace else.
Exactly.
And you contract that out.
We do, yeah.
It's, it's actually required in the plan, I believe.
Yeah.
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 Okay, so that's gonna be dealt with. I assume you said that the, each owner's gonna have their, or each occupant's gonna have their own trash. So is it part of the rent that they keep the trash container in the garage, is that?
Yeah, that would be part of the bylaws, it would be in the lease agreement.
Okay. This looks like you've got the potential for a bunch of common yards in most of these areas. Is that gonna be an issue for the person that wants to have a bar, backyard barbecue or a fire pit or?
Um, fire pit, as long as it would be contained on the patio, they couldn't do it outside of there, they couldn't do something in the yard, so to speak. At least not a permanent.
So that area in, in the middle is kind of a common area that's. Yeah.
Here or here, yeah, it's all common area.
Okay, so they can't just use that as their own space?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's gonna be part of the rental agreement then?
Absolutely, yes.
Bylaws.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I guess that addition is my issue, has anybody got anything else that we haven't talked about? Miles, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, we got a lot of thoughts, obviously, from the planning department on this. We definitely, especially at this phase in the conversation, don't wanna say almost too much, cause we don't wanna lead the conversation. One, do you guys be able to freely give your ideas to the developer without us kind of leading anything? I guess the only conversation I will say that we had with Mr. Hyde here is, like this body, we have concerns about the potential conflict between this development and Somerset when it comes to recreational amenities. We went over a couple ways in our pre-application meeting to deal with that. One of the kind of low-hanging fruit ways that we thought, you've, you stated several times tonight that when it comes to common space, when it comes to trash, that'll all be a part of the lease agreement. I guess we would just offer up kind of a, a low-hanging fruit way. And I don't know how enforceable this is, but still, I think it's good to have the tool in your toolbox, we've been talking about that a lot tonight. Is just putting some in the lease agreement that say like, you know, you'll notice our recreational amenities across the street here, those are part of that apartment. Like if our tenants are found to be violating, you know, um.
Well, you gotta be careful, you gotta be careful when you start saying, when you start saying my tenants start violating, cause they're trespassing onto the neighbor's property.
Yeah.
And they'd have to go through the clubhouse and whatever mechanism they've got a swipe card or something to get into the pool area.
Yeah.
So.
Or just a volleyball court, so they're open.
And as we, and as we do this bike trail thing, and there's all of a sudden now there's bikers coming into the project and they're utilizing, hanging out on volleyball courts.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I.
I know, that's, that's a problem, though, the problem is, I think it is a hard enforcement thing because either Somerset's gotta enforce it or you've got it.
What if Somerset's coming over and walking through my backyard?
Yeah.
No.
I mean, I, I think we're overthinking how and who is gonna be interacting, however the kind of.
Agreed, and that's why I said, I think there is a problem with enforcement, but I think if you put the language in there like.
Well, it'll, it'll be, it'll definitely be identified, that, that is not part of our.
If you're, yeah, like, if you're causing, I don't know how to wordsmith this, and I could even like take some time to think about it and come up with a more lawyer way of sounding this out, but just saying like, hey, you're causing an issue for this other establishment that you're in violation of our lease agreement. And the issue could be your trespassing in their pool, it's not cool, man.
At that point in time, they're calling the police department.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna get into those types of situations as, as a landlord on this side of the road.
Right.
Versus a landlord on the other side of the road, and I really don't see that being a, a, a big problem. I really don't, but.
I don't know.
Maybe I, I mean, I've seen, we've, we've had complexes next to other complexes in, in other communities, and we really don't see that as being, as, as an issue.
Okay, well, that, I guess that was our thought.
I understand, yeah.
No, that was our thought about where the potential conflict lies and like a potential solution.
Right.
George, you had something you wanted to say?
So in a manner, if, what I'm, what I'm thinking also in that, in that manner, that at least so it's identified to your residents that, you know, it's a separate facility.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There, there won't, there won't be the misunderstanding as far as the distinction between our development and, and the Somerset.
And they're not to use their stuffs type of thing.
Do you have any other questions, sir?
I do not.
Okay. Cause you probably talked about landscape plans and stuff, what's gonna be required for that?
That'll be all part of, right? The next, the next step.
Yep, usually after this meeting, just so everyone's on the same page internally, we're gonna send you a follow-up email likely tomorrow that kinda go over summarizing what we heard from this body and then what the next steps are, and we'll send out a list of what's all required and, uh, set of site plans.
Go ahead.
Then you guys will go back, do your thing, work on getting us the site plans. Once we get a, a set that's at least majority complete from you guys, at that time, we'll kick out the agency review. So that will go out to all of our partnering agencies, the drain commission, the road commission, um, et cetera. We usually like to give them about two weeks to get their thoughts together and get them back to us. We compile that all into a fully built-out staff report, and at that time, then we can come back to the planning commission. They'll have full information and be able to give you guys full feedback.
All right.
Thank you, George had another comment?
I just wanted to ask about the traffic study, is that something that we are privileged to see or can't see? Maybe, maybe if you could get that to Miles would be great sometime.
Miles has a copy of it?
Okay, very good.
There was a, there was actually a traffic study done when this was proposed, there's two hundred and eighty-eight units of apartments.
Oh, wow, I remember that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So.
Thank, thank you for like going through the preliminary of this, it's, I think, very helpful.
Yeah, it was great.
For us and for the.
For us too.
I just wondered if, if we're finished with this, I just had another question about I'd properties in the township, if I could.
Uh, separate item.
Yeah. That's what it is, okay, I, that's why I asked.
Thank, thank you for asking, but no.
All right.
That's a different issue, Ray. Thank you, gentlemen.
Also?
Yep, thank you very much, thanks for coming. Hope this was helpful to you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, lots, thank you.
All right, great.
So can I get some feedback, was this a good idea to do it this way as opposed to the free-for-all we normally do? Or is, does anybody have any concerns or comments they'd like?
I kinda like the free-for-all.
Yeah.
Most of us had the same questions.
Yeah, and, and I, I struggled a little bit like not being able to add on an additional question to some, like when Ray spoke and when Jason spoke. I wanted to like add on to it, so I did struggle with that a little bit, but.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say that, I appreciate, uh, it's intentional in making sure that each of us have a voice and an opportunity and it's not one loudmouth like myself running the whole set of questions.
Well, thank you, we'll, we'll think about maybe ways to improve it.
I, I do, if I may. If I may, George. I, I do think, like, uh, what Miles is on about having some type of language, cause of, no?
We need to stay away from that.
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah, I.
And that's, that's between those two.
Yeah.
The two owners.
I don't know, man, I mean, if it, if it's gonna create a burden on our public safety, because they're out there mediating conflicts, we need to be concerned about that. We have a small police force and they have.
At the, I mean, not, not a legal thing, but at least something so they, they know that.
If they stick it in their lease, that that is not a part of the, uh, that they can go and see if Somerset will sell them memberships.
It's a different development, you know? It'd be like me walking across the street to swim in your pool.
Yeah.
Without your permission. I mean, how many people actually read their leases? True. I mean, I, I don't think lease language is sufficient. Um, I would like to see something a little bit more concrete related to this, whether it's signage, fencing, um, or an articulation agreement with Somerset.
Yeah, or at least a memorandum of understanding or something.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Mediation protocol, I don't know.
I don't know if AMP, though, the, the problem is. Here, and I don't know if it's probably not, I guess, but the company AMP, which owns Somerset right now, they have bought many I products.
Many what?
Many I products, they bought a series of I'd apartment complexes in the greater Lansing area. And over time, I think they've developed a bad relationship with the I development company. So at this point in their relationship, I don't think there's any like goodwill to establish any kind of memorandum of understanding. So that, that could put that, a pool agreement in a tough spot.
Yeah, all the more reason to put structures in place to prevent that conflict.
Yeah, I'm a fan of, I mean, the whole point of zoning at a fundamental level is to mitigate conflict, and so.
Without getting us into legal issues.
Yeah, I mean, his point of, he doesn't wanna enforce, he doesn't want the burden of enforcing the con, or de-mitigating the conflict. I, I guess our whole thing is like, yes, Somerset doesn't want that either, I'm sure, they don't want their staff out there. Um, I'm a little biased, I guess, cause I live there, so I know how the facility operates, maybe more than somebody typically would. But like Saturday, there's no staff on, on property for Somerset. And the gate to the, uh, pool is open. Now, I think you can reasonably say, I think you.
That's an insurance issue.
I think you can, yeah, I think you can reasonably say that is a Somerset problem. Like, it's their fault that, that they should ensure that their device is locked. And I assure you, a lot of residents there feel like that. But the volleyball courts, the dog park that Somerset has, the grilling area, that kinda like outdoor couch hangout area if you've ever driven down, that's just, I mean, it's open, it's in a field.
Yeah. And it's private.
Yeah, I mean, it's their property. I mean, to, uh, Mr. Hyde's point here tonight, I don't know if a group of six people from one development come over to play volleyball against a group of six people from Somerset's gonna like be the worst thing ever, it could be nice.
Right, right.
So it's, it's a hard one.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a rat hole, I really don't wanna go down.
Yeah, that's what's hard about it.
I just, I don't think it's something that we should get into.
Yeah, so there's pros and cons, I guess.
Yeah, and I, there's no perfect solution to most problems, though.
Well, it would have a different name and everything as well.
Yeah, I don't think so, I think at the minimum, though, like putting something in the lease agreement, I know people don't read their lease agreements, but they get whipped out on them when there's some type of enforcement that the property. Then your lease agreement becomes super important and the language in it. So something that says like, hey, these, this is the confines of our development, like these are the amenities that are offered to us, like all the other amenities around are not. Doesn't require them to do anything, it doesn't require Somerset doing anything, it's just like, ah, hey, just so you know.
Right.
Will people read it, I don't know, is it in there in case it needs to be? Yeah, it is, so I think that's positive, and I think signage could probably go a long way.
Well, if it's an issue, people going into the Somerset pool in their community center, they should have a swipe card system and they just issue every tenant a card and.
They don't have one of those?
They don't, and, but a hundred percent, I don't think that's something that like the I'd shouldn't be punished because of Somerset's lack.
No, I don't think so either.
Not at all.
So that's my opinion.
That's Somerset's problem.
I just, I, you know, I've, I've seen developments like, like Somerset, and they have, you know, it says that this, these facilities are for the, the, the use of Somerset residents only.
Right.
Yeah. Others, others will be deemed as trespassers.
Okay. Any further discussion about this issue, Joe? Hey, I would like to, I, I thought Kate was gonna be able to stay, but apparently she had, I was hoping we'd have a chance to do a little round of introductions and get a chance to meet her and her meet us, but that obviously didn't work.
She had some family things she had to run to, so I told her, we'll take you for as much as we can get you tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Your feet.
So, uh, we'll forego that, we'll do it some later date. We're working towards developing the twenty-twenty-four work plan, and I know we've got some issues that we're gonna be carrying over. I think Miles will probably bring us a summary in this meeting next, uh, planning commission. Uh, what's, what we've accomplished and what's still on the board, or maybe in June, uh, January.
Yeah, and so in January, we'll bring the end-of-year report and we'll bring an Excel spreadsheet with kind of what a proposed work plan could be. Looking for you guys to add items to that plan.
So, Ryan, I would, would like to, and you're welcome to jump in commissioners, I'd like to have the board's feeling about the grading thing that we've talked about, where we wanna restrict, uh, water being pushed onto other people's property, is that something the board wants us to pursue or not? I know you and I have talked about it, you're supportive of it, but I don't wanna spend a lot of hours developing things that the board won't support. So I'd like to have you address that. The MPSCs now have control over wind, solar, and battery storage in the state of Michigan. Planning commissions have a three-month window from when a person submits a request for a solar installation or wind or battery storage to either approve it or deny it. If they deny it, it goes to the Michigan Public Service Commission, which is a three-member board. They get to make the call as to whether it's a go or a no-go. So if your restrictions are more restrictive than the BMPSC of the state, it immediately can go to them. Otherwise, you can't use your three-month window. I don't know that we can develop standards or anything that we can expedite in three months if we're starting from ground zero. So I'd like to know if the board is supportive of the idea of having a local ordinance for wind, solar, and battery storage? Or if we just wanna let the state run the program?
Question? This is for commercial level?
This is for five hundred mega units or greater, yes. At this point, now there is some MS staff that says, well, you know, if we're gonna reach the goal of, uh, two hundred thousand acres of solar by twenty-thirty-four, we might have to reduce that number to make it a smaller installation. So do we wanna be proactive or reactive? Because a three-month window doesn't give us a lot of time, is my concern.
What's the status of our ordinances for any solar or wind, commercial five hundred plus megawatt or lower?
So I can speak to that a little bit, I guess. So we have obviously the WEX ordinance, um, which we've talked about here in the past, and I think you were even on the board when some amendment to that came. Uh, that probably following all this needs to be taken a look at in twenty-twenty-four anyways, to make sure we're not going above and beyond the state's standard. Because if we are, then that means it auto kicks to the state, which we don't want.
When by WEX, those are the small scale, right?
Uh, there is large and small.
Okay.
So there is commercial grade language in there. So we need to take a look at that probably, and then in regards to solar, we really don't have anything. And, um, when I first got here, me and Beth, uh, started doing a large amount of research and, uh, going into that because we thought there, we should probably get ordinance on the books. Then all the state legislation started coming down the pipe. So we said, okay, let's hold back, see where this all lands, cause we didn't want, again, spend a bunch of time just to have to change everything, which it would have resulted, that would have been the case. Uh, right now, staff, myself, Beth, we have a class we're going to, I wanna say mid-January to, there are people much smarter than me are gonna explain how this, uh, how this affects municipalities. John did a good job of summarizing a lot of that today, but I think my recommendation as staff would be let staff review the WEX ordinance and let us develop a, to John's point, a template for, uh, solar ordinance. What John is attempting to do, I believe. What John is attempting to do, I believe, and let me know, John, if I'm wrong here, is create some kind of boil or plate, like, hey, develop to these specs. And if they can't develop to those specs, then it's just a no, right? Because we don't have a lot of time here when we, when this comes to review, you're, you have a very finite period or it auto kicks to the state. So if we have a boil or plate amounts with some standards and some specs for this, then we can say, okay, well, you didn't meet our specs, so it's an automatic no. The only problem with developing our specs is we're limited in how far we can go, we can't go more than the state.
Correct.
So we'll have to look at what the state and probably get somebody, again, that actually is a specialist in this area. Which would be a cost of township, so that is like the one drawback of this. Is we're gonna have to get somebody that knows what they're talking about and what, how to read through all these specs and help us develop this ordinance. Come up with a boilerplate and do it. So the benefit of the boilerplate is it can create an ordinance where we can know yes or no very quick. The downside of it is, is we're pro- it's probably gonna take a while to develop, we'll probably have to consult some professionals that may or may not cost money to gain some knowledge from them.
And the association, the planning association is not putting in.
They haven't put, no, the, I haven't seen anything, it's just so new, I mean, this has just happened. And the, the Michigan Township Association was, I think, surprised as we all were how quickly this moved through the state. So I'm sure there are some bodies right now trying to develop some, you know, recommended language for Michigan municipalities, but I haven't seen that yet. But again, we'll take that class in January, hopefully we'll learn more and hopefully we'll be more informed to talk about what staff recommends our, our move could be here. I think what you're asking tonight is, is there interest from the board to allow staff to review some?
Yeah, right, yeah, cause we wanna spend a lot of time on it, is that clear or?
Yes.
John, I can question for you, John, you mentioned three months, now is that three months for us to put an ordinance together, is that three months after we get a proposal from somebody to review it?
It's from when we get a proposal from somebody to review it and give it a thumbs up or down.
Yeah, the state has a one year moratorium on what, uh, their process for now. To give municipalities a ti- some time to get something together.
Okay, right. And the, right now, the MPSC staff is still wavering about what their standards are gonna be. And if you followed the, the tunnel project, uh, they, they just approved that concept with a two to zero vote.
Disapproved, you said?
No, they approved it with two to zero vote, there's only three members on the committee.
Them wavering about their standards doesn't make this process easy either, cause we're trying to figure out what they want, so we can figure out what we're gonna write.
Right.
So there is gonna be a little bit of an element of like time here, we can't just start writing an ordinance tomorrow, cause we're still trying to figure out everything.
Right, correct, but I guess the question I've got for the board is, is it something we should bother pursuing? Cause Clinton County has spent a ton of money rewriting an ordinance that's so tight, it's gonna automatically get kicked to the stake.
Uh, I'll work with Miles to have something in the board packet for next week to ask that question.
Thank you, yeah, cause it, it is gonna be quite a, quite a lift for us to develop something that's gonna be workable and worth enforcing, I think.
Yeah, and sort of a concurrent thought that we could follow. Our Senator, Sam Singh, is the one who's sort of been pushing this through at the state level. We could also engage in some advocacy for what we'd like to see happen at the state level.
Good point, yeah, you and Sam are friends, so.
Yeah, and he's our, he's our guy, so like it's incredibly, you know.
Opportunistic.
Yeah, yeah, like let's, let's tap into our resource.
Capitalize on the resource, yeah, absolutely, thank you very much, Ryan. The other thing I, and I know Karen and I have had a dispute over this, is the utilities. I know we wanna buy some more REUs from the, uh, sewer expansion project. And that's gonna affect development in Bath or at least potential for develop, development. And I'd like to have some direction from the board as to what kind of development they wanna pursue and where. I think that would be very useful for us as we look at some of these kind of off the wall proposals that we heard might be coming down the pipe on development in some of the areas. So I don't know, does anybody got any feeling about that, is that something that we should be pursuing or is it just?
They'll probably kick it right back to us to determine that, but yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that you're gonna get a really educated response on, on that.
How many REUs are you planning on buying, do you know?
We don't know, we're still doing our sewer rate study to figure out what, what the situation is currently. We just approved that, what, last month, the month before?
Cause, cause that's, that's something we should always be thinking about when we're looking at development projects, is it practical to do? Is it cost effective, can we, can we support it?
Yeah, and maybe that means changes in the master plan.
Time on research in it, just tell the developer, no, sorry, we don't have sewer capacity.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully with the sewer upgrade, we'll have more capacity, but you know, we're, that's in the future.
Right, right, but let's look at what that means for us in the future, if we can, is that practical or that's something?
Can always ask the question.
That's right, we might not like the answer, but we can always ask the question.
You mentioned sewer rate study, is that gonna include, include a new connection fee too? Are you gonna look at the connection fees? Cause my understanding from, I thought Miles said earlier, that connection fee for township hasn't changed in a long time.
The tap in fee?
Yeah, the tap in fee.
Uh, I don't think it does, do you know, Miles?
So, um, I know that, uh, they're, they have worked with a firm to determine what's sewer rates themselves could possibly be, but I've, I've also talked to Karen about we need, and I know she is in agreement with this. I don't know where this is at, I don't, maybe the, maybe this is something that the board needs to firm up, like if it's something the board has appetite for, but yeah, tap in fees for sewer haven't been changed in like twenty years. So it's three thousand dollars, uh, would be a source of revenue that could go into the sewer fund. So in my view, yeah, it is a little hanging fruit.
But it won't come out of the sewer rate study, that's.
It won't, yeah, yeah, that's for sewer rate specific.
Right.
The sewer rate study should include that, that's part of the sewer rate study is the connection fee.
Not when I've been involved in them, Ray, that's two separate issues. Because one is based on your capital investment, which is the tap in fee. And the other is based on your maintenance and upkeep.
Get all the part of the same study.
It can be part of the same study, I guess I'm unclear if it is or not.
Yeah, my understanding was this was more about operational day to day, what is the rate of the average person who's connected to the sewer need to pay in order for us to keep infrastructure built, but I'll ask that question.
Yeah, cause really, the tap in fee should be going up as the value of the system goes up.
Correct.
Because the, the, the tap in fee is a, their percentage of buying into the system.
Correct.
And if, you know, if our value of our system has doubled in twenty years, which it probably has, the tap in fee should have doubled.
Right, one thing I will just to add to this, so the planning commission knows kinda what I know in this area is when we're talking about tap in fees and we're talking about the rate and the rate study and with the township engineer. It was interesting because prior to New Hope, they work in a lot of communities, and so like one of the benefits of uh, having a township engineer that, you know, consults with our communities is they can tell you what is going on in other places. And so I just asked them, um, what, what are you generally seeing in terms of rates? And obviously we're high in this area, but compared to the rates in the Grand Rapids area, and I know that's not apples, apples comparisons. We're by no means on the high end, so that was one thing, so I think that made some people feel more reassured that if rates had to go up, we're not like s- squeezing people, um, and then we talked about our tap in fees and we're, we were by far on the low end there too. So, but yeah, in this area, I think we are still, I think we're higher, I think the way township is closely catching up to us though with their rates, so we're, we're, they're becoming pretty equal with where we're at.
I think the board generally has the appetite to right-size our fee structure, Miles brought some changes to us earlier this year and it got most support from the board, knowing that these things have, we just have not kept up in a slow way to keep up with the times and now suddenly we're having, you know, it's the same thing with our millages, right? We just haven't moved things for decades and then suddenly it's like, we need more immediately and it's gonna be a, you know, pull the tape off the arm here type of deal, it's gonna hurt that first time, but then hopefully we can get it back on the slow and steady.
Be interested to know how we compare like Meridian Township and City East Lansing and Lansing, cause I'll bet we're a lot lower. Cause we're paying, we're paying less than forty dollars a month for the people who are connected to sewer, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
I know our tap in fees are quite low, from what I.
Eventually, eventually as Bath, as Bath continues to grow, I think we need to take a look at having our sewer fee related to the water usage. Which is pretty easy to do.
If you're not on a well.
I have a well.
But you're connected, you're connected to the sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why we.
There's a way to measure your well.
Works fine for me, my well's three hundred and twenty feet deep too.
That's pretty deep, you know.
Yeah.
There's a way to, there's a way to, to measure that, it, it wouldn't be basically water usage, they'd measure your sewage.
Right, right, there is a way.
Maybe.
Go that route, I will set up some barriers, uh, only because of having lived in Lansing and trying to do gardening.
Well, the thing is, in that case, you put in two water meters.
Yeah.
You put in one for your garden and lawn sprinkling and one for your, for your in, inside the host, which is pretty easy, cause your outside taps are generally all off a separate feed.
Are you on sewer up there?
No, no, I lived in the Eastside of Lansing for quite some time and was frustrated by sewer rates.
I'm missing a line on my sewer map if you're on sewer.
He ran out there all by himself.
So those are the things that I had, that I had in mind, if, if anybody's got anything else, if you'd like to to at least look at or suggest to the board before we do the plan for twenty twenty-four?
A very simple one that should take just a couple of meetings, and that's adjusting, um, our, I'm not sure which ordinance would be, but I, I'm proactive about, um, requiring people to stop when pedestrians are engaged in a crosswalk. And so we don't have that built into our, um, uh, set of ordinances and it's not a part of state law. But there's model language out there and we would want that as part of, uh, Saifrontis's school, especially when that infrastructure, uh, project starts.
Is that something you think the board would wanna address?
Yeah, I think there would be support for that.
Here, well, you wanna put that on your list?
That's the only one I felt pretty strongly that I could answer, yes.
Hello.
Okay, has anybody else got anything I'd like to talk about? Uh, what else do we got to do, Miles, uh, development update from the planner?
Yeah, so, uh, I was asked to just give a brief, uh, development update, uh, it's maybe been a while and Jason, I don't know if you've gone one of these since you've gone on, um, so just a couple of things, we did give out some CFOs recently, so if that wasn't stayed before, the surgical center has now received a CFO. Uh, Ace Hardware has received a CFO, so they, you know, that, that encompasses us going out there and I mean we get pretty nitty gritty about, we count every bush, tree and everything else they promised to make sure it's there. That includes the fire marshal, police, um, the head building inspector going, uh, around and through the facilities making sure they can comply with all state fire code, um, state building code and whatever. Any conditions that may be on the, uh, development placed by, or recommended by the police force. So that's those, and then again, uh, just in terms of development, we're always in talks with HDI. They're the developers building out this neighborhood. We expect them to come in at some time in the winter, especially because they now have developed all their remaining lots. So if they wanna continue to build in the spring, they have to get something going this winter. Uh, as I've detailed in the past, I think the main holdup here is this whole drainage network actually drains out to Lake Lansing. So there's an inter-county drainage agreement that has to be shored up here and now expanded upon. And two county drainage departments working together with a developer is not always the easiest thing to do, so I think that's where they're at. No news on this development, I have not heard from them in quite a while, we're past their typical three month check-in. So I don't know what's going on there, and Jason, you, I believe you even remember this from your time, cause it's been going on the whole time I was here, so. That's that, uh, obviously the board, um, conditionally approved norm fastener, if you don't already know. Um, so now kinda the biggest hurdle that we have to work through with them over the winter months and, uh, and the next couple of months, I guess, is getting a development agreement together, that was one of the conditions of approval. We wanna be in the ground doing some municipal sewer work, uh, at the same time or right around when they are going to wanna be getting in the ground, laying, laying their foundation. So we're working with their development team and our township engineer to get our timelines together, overlay those timelines and get an agreement. So, um, that's kinda the news there. And we'll see that, how that goes, it's gonna be a really complicated process and involve a lot of people and I'm sure their escrow is about to get built out there. See, I think that's really it, I know that there was some, uh, talk today about some clear cutting going on on this property that you guys remember, might remember from Josh Smithers coming in, he wanted to put an office building there, obviously the residents of Haakow uh, didn't love that land use going in there and there was a quite an organized pushback from that, but hey, that's what the public process is for. So glad to see it, um, Mr. Kessler has now taken ownership of that property and has directed for some clear cutting, I guess, to happen and.
Done.
Um, yeah, well, so we'll see what, we'll see what develops there, there's nothing official, I'm not trying to stir the rumor mill. I would assume that it's gonna be some kind of residential project to go mirroring what he's done in Haakow, but that at this point is an assumption, it's his property, I don't know what's gonna come of it. We haven't received an application, but just if you get any calls or your friends are texting you, what's going on in the corner, that's what we know at this point.
Nothing.
Yeah, it's, the ownership has changed, that's what we know.
What's the zoning of that piece, Miles?
Uh, medium density residential.
I also have a question about develop, potential development outside of our township. So Chandler Road between Clark and Slate on the DeWitt side. I noticed that there's screening, pine tree screening that has been put in.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
Do you have any sense of what's going on?
No, I can ask, um, I mean, we do know the chair of the DeWitt Planning Commission, DeWitt Township Planning Commission, so I'll ask him. I guess I saw that too, and my assumption was it was just wind screening for the farm itself. I didn't think they'd be developing anything there, but now you got me curious and worried, I guess.
It's, I, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's right in the middle, but not in the middle, but the.
I do know, um, that there has been a large conversation on the DeWitt side about a development. Get the X ray, I believe this parcel here.
Oh, yeah, there's signs.
There's been a robust, uh, conversation on the DeWitt Township Planning Commission about, uh, mixed use development going in there, so.
There's signs around.
There's, there's lots of build out really happening, kind of adjacent to us right now, where I think we'll have, it will impact the commercial and residential activity in the township, you guys have probably seen more building out happening southwest on Saginaw Highway, there's some apartments slash townhomes going up there, uh, there's that marijuana, um, dispensary that's gonna be opening up, um, right next to Costco, um, so.
Hotel hasn't popped up at all, it's like they stopped that construction.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with that, so, yeah, that's, I guess, the development update I have for now.
Thank you. Not to make our meeting longer, but, uh, the two initial sites that you, uh, began with, there on Saginaw Highway.
Yeah.
Whi- which one got it first, which was the winner, cause it seemed like they were in competition.
Yeah, they were, yeah, it did seem like that and I think they actually were, um, so I wanna say the surgical center got CFO first by like probably about a week. So, yeah, they were, it was close.
Right next to.
It was close, the Ace Hardware will functionally probably open first, I think they wanna be open in the next month or so. The surgical center has indicated they, because of the nature of the industry they're in, there's a lot more licensing embedded they have to go through. They're five months out from opening up.
And Barry's Bagels.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good question, I just asked, um, the owner, because we're coming to the time of year where the marijuana, um, facility we have in the township is gonna have to renew their permit soon, so I was speaking with him today. So of course, I took the opportunity to ask him, what's up with Barry's? So of course I took the opportunity to ask him, what's up with Barry's Bagels? He says, I get asked that ten times a day. He said, right now, I think he just said there's some. Argument slash agreements going on between the franchise owner and the contractors that they're forced to use through. The franchise itself for the install. So that's kind of the bad thing about going through the franchise route is. You know, you're subject to the franchise. So.
Yep. And there is no argument there. You lose.
That's the truth. Talking about Ace Hardware site in Midwest Power is the same thing.
Yeah.
Midwest Power says they're moving Wednesday tomorrow.
Really?
Oh.
Well, I was, I took my mower down to get some stuff done to it and they said, we're not accepting any mowers until. Until January, but we're moving Wednesday.
Oh, are they moving too?
Awesome.
What's that?
Where are they moving to?
In here.
Where are you saying they're moving from?
They're down in the Heldon Township right now. Down south of Jolly Road.
Okay, so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, you walk into their place and one of the walls empty.
Yeah.
They've been moving stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even when we were looking at some of the plantings back there, I mean, delivery trucks were coming in, they're stocking shelves. That's why I said function, I think Ace Hardware is closer to opening.
I imagine.
So.
Surgical Center's got a lot of hoops to jump through. Did they resolve that drainage issue that we?
Yeah, they did. And John Morrison, all credit to him for really hounding the state. Um, it seems to be performing okay, but we will keep an eye on it. Because the state uh is in control of that drainage network there, is there to maintain and operate. And um, we, we still are concerned about its ability to operate properly in the spring, but we'll keep a close eye on it. Where, I guess our biggest fear is it having like a snow melt in the spring. It getting overloaded and the next day being super cold and freezing everything. That can be problematic.
Yep.
Well, that's actually partly an MDOT issue, isn't it?
It is. I mean, it's almost wholly an MDOT issue, but we'll keep an eye on it because we don't trust MDOT too.
That's understandable.
Sorry to call MDOT out there like that.
No, no, they deserve it.
I'm sure they watch our meetings.
They're, they know me usually. Uh, Ryan, do you have a report for us?
Yeah. So we've met a couple of times since I've last reported out to you back uh last month, November twentieth. We had a special meeting where we went over. Once again, board rules. I think we're completely gone, we've completely gone through them and discussed them all. The attorneys are now cooking up some. Documents, sort of choose your own adventure. You can do this, you can do that. And so we can move through them. Uh, and hopefully strengthen those uh in the very near future. We've been working on that for about a year. We had a regular meeting on November twentieth. We appointed Kate Higerman to the board to replace me in my trustee position. Uh, we also did some planning commission appointments, George and Jason. George is a real boy now, so. We're happy about that. We did three public hearings that night, one on the budget, one on the SUP for um. Norm and one on the uh industri- industrial development district. Is that what it's called, Miles?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then we also pushed back the Anne Drive project that we're using some ARPO money for because they weren't able to get to it this year, but they're. Promising the same prices next year if we commit to it. So we've just sort of pushed that forward into twenty four. Then December fourth, we did some more appointments to uh committees for board members. So. This will be my last meeting as a uh planning commissioner and Kate will be taking my place. Uh, we had, we've had so much change over this four year term. That we were sort of scattered in how we were placed on boards and commissions, sort of you inherited whoever you took the place of and. I got the feeling that. Board members were looking to be more strategically placed. So I gave them all an option of like, tell me where you'd like to be placed, what boards and commissions you're interested in and then sort of. Spread it out in front of me uh on a spreadsheet and put them together. And so. Uh, some folks aren't moving, some folks are entirely moving, but there's some shifting there. For us here at the planning commission, it'll be Kate starting in in January. And I just met with her before the meeting to tell her everything I know. It took all twenty five minutes, so she should. Come in here uh real ready to go. Uh, she is excited about joining this committee, so I'm, I'm happy for her. Uh, we. Approve the budget for next year after that long uh process, starting in September. So we were ready to roll in twenty four. It does take into account one point six million dollars in fund balance. Hopefully it won't be that dramatic because. You know, we can only do that basically twice before we're out of fund balance. So we'll definitely have to talk about what uh revenue looks like in the future. I know that's scary and there's folks on Facebook trying to gin people up. We don't know what that is or what that means, but. It's our responsibility to look at what are the options and revenue is one of them and drastically cutting is the other one. So we'll be looking at both of those. Uh, for fiscal year twenty five. Uh, and then lastly, we uh approved the Michigan Strategic Fund requests. Uh, and those moved today to the Michigan Strategic Fund and they approved both of them. One was a. Strategic Site Readiness Program Grant of three point eight six million dollars for the Norm uh project. And then the second is a Michigan Business Development Program Grant, which is up to one point six million uh for job creation for the Norm project. So. Helping us to deal with some of the infrastructure changes that will be required. Uh, really for the growth of the township, but certainly for this project specifically. So. That's uh, you know, that's pretty darn exciting. That'll be really helpful to that project and to us overall. So something to celebrate.
Yep.
And we have a meeting uh coming up next week. The eighteenth. No special meeting, just a regular scheduled meeting. You're telling us, yes. That's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner, has anybody got comments, questions?
Had a couple. What, Miles mentioned the uh thing at Chandler and Club Course. We gotta, we. Darryl Kessler talked to the president of our Home Board Association about that. What we found out was he plans, what we'd like to do is build nine homes there.
Really?
Five, well, five on this property you just bought, which we don't know if you can get that many in there. And four on the other side of the street, where there's nothing there. It'll be a total of nine. And have them be the same kind of homes that are there now and they, and they ask whether or not we, we could incorporate into our homeowners association, which I think would be a good idea to do it that way. So that's initially what his thoughts are. And they have, they have pretty much clear cut that property. Starting this morning, because I left this morning at about eight o'clock and he was already working.
And he likes to start early.
Question I had too on residential development and stuff. What say do we have in, in how a property can be developed once it's approved? And case in point, if you take a look at. The cottages.
Okay.
They're building four buildings, so they've got three under construction right now, in that center circle in there.
They're cutting all the trees down.
There's not been many trees in there for a long time. Uh, you, you, I'm talking about a different spot. Uh, you're talking about senior court.
Yeah, you're not talking about senior.
No, yeah, they're cutting all trees down there too, but anyway, um, that's, see where he, he shows.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Eight lots in there. That's actually four buildings or will be four buildings.
Yep, one, two, three, four.
Correct.
Yep.
And but if you drive around that thing, the buildings. They back up, there's not much room between them. It's like they've got a swimming pool between these buildings. There's a great big hole dug and they put a berm between, down the middle of it, north, south. It looks like crap.
Yeah, they're probably trying to catch drainage.
I don't know what they're trying to do. They, they had to haul away a lot of dirt because of the big hole they dug.
Yeah.
I don't want you to put a thing in and raise the holes up, the houses up a couple of feet, it would look a lot better. So I, I guess it's that kind of thing is. Does the planning department have, planning, any say in how they develop something like this?
Yeah, kind of how it's already been planned is like this, and then as long as they can live within our zoning ordinance, um, it's administratively approved and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, we don't really have like a grading ordinance. That's something that we're talking about right now. It could be covered by something like that. You could say that slope is inappropriate. Um. I haven't heard that about that from anyone. We were out there on site. It does slope quite a bit. I guess I didn't think it was that drastic, but. Mr. Kessler is about to have a lot of dirt on his hands and gonna need somewhere to put it, so.
It's too late to put it there. He'd bury those four buildings.
Okay, so I was gonna say if there, if there's any kind of balancing that could go back there, I'm sure.
It could have been before they built, two of the buildings are built.
Yeah, yep, yep. We've been going out there doing our uh setback inspections.
They actually built a berm right down with north south, and then planted trees on top of it.
Yeah, probably just to build some privacy between the yards.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, Webster Road, the question I had is how much do we, oh, I guess we know. How much room is it between the Norm building? Or the Norm property line and Webster Road property line?
Oh, quite a bit.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
Quite a bit. Scale is problematic there.
Two hundred feet, isn't it?
Again, yeah, yeah, it's every bit of two hundred feet at least.
Yeah, we need to take a little, what do we want to Webster Road?
A good hundred yards at least.
What do we want the Webster, Webster Road corridor to look like? Cause I know in their proposal, they. Said that it could be restaurants going there, other stuff going there, which I think.
I'd say it's about three, three fifty, yeah, at a minimum.
Yeah, okay, so there's plenty of room to do something in there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's why scale that building, I talked about this at the board level. It really throws a lot of stuff off. You see this massive structure and you're like, okay, what could possibly even fit? I always would look across the street at this apartment building, but you could still squeeze that building in here, if not maybe two, if you really tried.
Yep, you could.
No, we don't wanna do that.
I vote for a Mexican restaurant.
I did, I did, I think Flo, uh, Texas Roadhouse, I think would really go good. I'm getting a lot of pushback here, so maybe I was wrong.
There's so much traffic on the highway.
Millennials are loving that. It's like the only franchise millennials like is Texas Roadhouse. I don't know what's going on.
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
They did discuss this at the meeting, the developer said he is working with Mr. Kessler and a development to the road frontage of that property.
Okay.
Jason?
Um, I wanna congratulate supervisor Fuma's Bliss. Um, have I had a chance to do that? I. It's very exciting to see I, I. Right, reason and calmness and uh productivity on the board. Um, it's clear that you are in your elements. And you have the leadership to drive the township forward, so I'm excited to see that. I'm also excited about. Kate Higerman being appointed to the board. Um, she has shown herself as thoughtful. And articulate in communicating.
Yeah.
Um, I, the rationale behind uh her votes. Uh, I think she's gonna be a great addition to the planning commission. Um, and just general overall excitement about uh the direction of the township.
Thank you. Mark? Just hoping I get reappointed. This is the last meeting.
Oh, really? This is where the real power comes.
George?
I have the same thing. I appreciate all the people that work behind the scenes to make this meeting go as well as it does. So I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you. Ryan, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I, I have loved being on the planning commission. I was telling Kate out there, I've learned so much from you all. Uh, and I feel like I know what's going on in the community, which is really helpful as being a board of trustees member. So. I will uh miss you all, but I'm sure this won't be the last time I'll be around. And I also am very excited that Kate will be taking my place. I think she's fantastic.
Thank you. Ray?
Well, I mirror what Jason said, definitely. Congratulations. I, uh, the decorum has changed significantly. It seems to be much, much more efficient and with the projects that are going on in the township, uh. I've been here since nineteen sixty six and uh I've not seen any, as much progress as we're having now, you know, ever. I mean, since uh, since the Taco Zoo was over on Park Lake, you know?
I know about that.
Oh, can I just piggyback on that? Since you mentioned you've been here since the sixties. Um, I came across a article, I think in the Lansing State Journal about that township and the dysfunction of the board. Um, that I, I thought was a nice counterpoint to where we've been. Uh, so this was back in seventy three. I, there was conflict, you probably know, uh, there was some conflict going on, I, with recall efforts and. During a board meeting, I, five tires got slashed, uh, of the supervisor. So it's, it's nice to see uh that I, the um, there's a strong independent spirit that has been in our community that has persisted for. Probably time immemorial.
I've got an extra jack if we need to.
It's an interesting community. Yeah, I'm really glad that you got to be the position of the supervisor, Ryan. I think it's great.
I just feel like it's going well.
It's very, going very well. It's a dramatic change and I was glad it happened so abruptly. You did a great job of changing the whole course of the meetings and how they're structured and how the public reacts. I think it's been. A real great move on your part, shows real leadership.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Very much.
I was just telling the board of review and I popped my head in there to introduce myself, that this has to be the board with the most change ever in the history.
It is, it definitely is.
We've had two members pass away. We've had a member be ruled that they weren't eligible to be there in the first place. We've had resignations, appointments and filling. It's. It's been crazy.
It has, yeah.
I told Al that he and I are the only originals from twenty twenty that are left, and so we're gonna wrap ourselves in bubble wrap.
That's true, yeah.
Al's the original from seventy six.
That's right, Al is the original, yeah.
And I, I, I was really impressed with Kate when she came so well prepared to that meeting.
Yeah.
She had done a lot of effort and research into Norm Fasters, came extremely well prepared. I was really impressed.
Me too.
Yeah, I, I was a little doubtful when you first suggested her, but I think she's gonna be a great addition to the planning commission. Thank you for choosing her. Thank you. Anything else? I will accept a motion to adjourn. Thank you, thank you. Anybody object? There are no objections and it passes. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. It's a good meeting, I think.